Ready? Okay, we're good to go. Sorry about that, guys, kind of lost track of time. Welcome to the city work session. Monday, November 10th, 2025, 4:30 PM, Thomas J. Smith Council Chambers, City Hall, 400 Washington Street in beautiful Burlington, Iowa. First up on discussion items tonight is the airport. Sarah, would you like to come up? And I see you brought a guest, please introduce him as well.
I will, Sarah Sandberg for Melody Terrace Fort Madison. This is Jay Lackenberg. He's your, one of your representatives from here in Burlington. Of course, he's a, he's an American airline pilot, so he's still flying. But, okay, so I think you've got in front of you the information that I sent talking about four months in, two-year contract, 12-round trips a week versus the 24. And of course, we're only going to Chicago and not to St. Louis as well. So if you look at the numbers, 210 flights scheduled in that four-month period versus 420. Cancellations are down, passenger counts are up. There were some transition pains along the way, primarily the Chicago end with available gates and sometimes on fueling. So Contour, my understanding is they're trying to currently buy what they call real estate at the airport, meaning Wisconsin Air has gates that they're not operating. So they're going to try to purchase those. I don't know how that all works, that's a little bit out of my area. So the fuel is purchased periodically here, but primarily in Chicago, as they have negotiated rates up there. Contour did agree to make us and Jet Air whole in the fuel purchase as compared to fuel purchases made in previous carriers. So 10,000 gallons a month previously. And so if they don't buy that much, they still make us whole for the rest of it. So we didn't lose any ground with our fuel sales. There could be delays, such as what happened last night. And Jake can attest to this, but Chicago weather with the delays for many carriers in Chicago, I know last night they had a late arrival back, supposed to be back at 7:45. They got back at 11:30. And I guess, you know, it's just a domino effect. So the crew rests now, it rolls to today, so they didn't get out until noon versus 9:00 AM. And it just, it's kind of a cycle. They eventually get back out of it and get back on schedule, but, you know, it's just one of those things that is flying and weather and you're going to have that. They have always committed to flying, though, as long as it's safe. And sometimes, you know, and Jay pointed this out in one of our board meetings, you got to remember when, we're not a Cedar Rapids, we're not a Moline, we're not a Peoria, we don't have three, four carriers, we have one. So if there's a debacle a little bit, it's going to affect on down the road. You can't just shift those passengers to another carrier. So we have seen where there's more travelers that are utilizing the airline that might have been discouraged based on accessibility. We've seen a lot of people that probably normally wouldn't have flown, that now with the ramp, they have a ramp to get up into the carrier, they have service with a wheelchair if they need to. So that has made it much more friendly to those people. Contour has become a chamber member. They've engaged in local speaking events, three of them to date. They immediately sent a notice after the government shutdown began that they would continue to fly without payment from subsidy as they feel the important commercial services provided to, to the, what I want to call it more, country or in the Midwest like this, so smaller communities. They know that it's important for business for them. So you can see on the graphs the importance of, or how their performance has been taking off. October, January, February, March are probably the slow months that we'll see that dwindle down a little bit, but not a whole lot, not from what I've seen already in the month of November. We are preparing a promotional handout during Christmas lighted parade that will promote travel for January through March, kind of like a buy one, get one or a 50% off discounted that Contour plans to walk alongside the airport's snow blower that we put in last year, they're going to walk alongside and hand some of these out. But, you know, in the numbers, I just, the implements are up, deplayments are up. One of the things on the implements, I'm going to point out, fiscal year '23, the entitlement money for the numbers that we have were 391,000 roughly. Fiscal year '24, it went down to 372. Fiscal year '25 is on pace for 440. Fiscal year '26, based on what I'm seeing already on these first few months, you could probably get up into the 780,000.
Wow, that's great.
You know, the flights canceled, those have gone down. Like I said, there's been a few hiccups trying to get started, but that's not unusual. Passengers served, I want to point out, that number is what calculates and keeps you in for subsidy. So we need the average at least, I want to say, I think it was 620, so we don't lose subsidy, and we're well above that. So a few instances of the late arrivals with the crew rests, some aircraft changes, a couple of piggyback flights. One thing they do periodically is they will bring in a charter plane, one of their charters, which is only a 16-seater versus a 30. They do that if they're doing PM work on the others. We did get caught one time when we had 20 passengers versus 16. Four of them elected to take the next flight that afternoon, so the 16 got to go. But I guess, I don't know.
All things that happen at a big airport.
Yeah, they do, yeah. I don't know if there's any, any questions you guys have on them, I don't know, I know you, your brother flew.
Yep, I will, well, I'll just give you my, my brother's personal experience. After years of using Air Choice One and relying on it, both Cape and Southern Air, he just got to the point where he would rent a car in Chicago or, and drive back because the plane that he has the millions of miles with, the airline, went to Chicago. But he was so impressed with his very first experience with Contour, he was compelled to write a letter. And when you can get people to do that, no offense, Tommy, that's my brother's name, especially my brother, to do that, you've done something. So he was, he was, he was impressed. So I, you know, Sarah, Jay, I can tell you that for me, sitting here, I have nothing but appreciation for the improvements you've made in the airport, the decisions you guys have made. You're helping our city right now, and I couldn't be more thrilled with your success so far in this early, in this venture with Contour. It's fantastic. Great.
I know Nick had trouble, your flight was delayed where you ended up driving?
It ended up canceled.
Oh, did it? Okay.
I got some of the wrong planes, though, so I'm all right with that.
You'd rather them not take you than...
We know.
Counsel, you have any questions for Sarah or Jay? Comments?
Come fly with us. That's what we ask.
Thanks for coming and giving us the update. We appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sarah.
All right, moving on to board and commission reports. Tim, we'll start with you and work our way over to...
I don't have anything. I had the senior center this morning, but I had a conflicting meeting this morning, so I missed it. I'll get the update from Allison and bring it in next week.
Okay, sounds good. Linda?
Yep, I don't have anything, unless you have any.
No, I don't.
Okay. I had a Southeast Iowa Regional Riverboat Commission meeting, and I tried to zoom in and I was locked out, but I noticed that the meeting, I don't know what they're trying to tell me, but the meeting was over in like 15 minutes. So I don't think I missed much there, I haven't received the minutes yet. We also had a B's meeting, they're talking about extending the season and uses for this facility so they can get more events there. They also talked about some of the new events that they could potentially bring if they make the decision to go in with turf rather than grass. And they continue to work on that to try to figure out how they can bring more people to that facility, and that in the long run will help us as well. That's all I have. Kay?
The Renewable Energy Commission, normal meeting would be tomorrow, but because of the holiday, we're not meeting this month and will meet in December.
I thought you said Wednesday. Nope.
Antonio? Nothing, okay. On the committee appointments, we have two. The following appointments need to be reviewed and voted on next week, and they're both Riverfront Advisory Committee. Marla's Robert's term will expire on 11/7/2025, or did expire, rather. As she has expressed interest in serving another term, has requested the council consider reappointing Marla to a new three-year term expiring 11/7/2028. Michael Kahn's term has expired 11/7/2025. He has also expressed interest in serving another term, has requested council consider reappointing Michael to a new three-year expiring term on 11/7/2028. There, we'll vote on those, but I feel both those are very good appointments, they're on the river all the time, so they're using the riverfront. Moving on to the proposed regular agenda for November 17th, 2025. First up will be a consideration of sale of property locally known as 1219 Stowe Street, City of Burlington, Iowa, with conditions. Mr. Tisland?
Ms. Lotz, on the south side of Stowe Street between Central and Brooks, it's been vacant for quite some time. The neighbor to the west at 1223 Stowe has submitted a bid, $500, to purchase it and expand their lot size. Not had any other interest in the lot, and they, they have been maintaining it for a little while as well, so would just expand their lot size there.
Anybody have any thoughts or questions, concerns?
Do, do they have to build on that lot?
No. The conditions are standard conditions, either a neighbor has to buy it and combine it with her lot, or if someone else wants to bid on it, they would have to build on it.
It looks like 1223's house is actually on the line there, right?
Uh, yeah, well, it's kind of deceiving.
Okay.
Yeah, just depending on the aerial image, they're not always the easiest to see. Yeah. It's a couple feet off there.
Might want to notice that waterworks. Any, any thoughts or concerns, Tim? Did you have any concerns beyond wanting to know?
No, that was it.
All right, we'll decide that on Monday. Next up is a public hearing, which will be a consideration of an ordinance rezoning property located along Sunnyside Avenue, west of Melvin Avenue, from Residential Zoning District to C1 Limited Commercial Zoning District. This will be the first reading. City Planning Commission voted for O to recommend approval.
This rezoning was initiated by 3415 Sunnyside. It's a church that's been vacant for a little while and has an interested buyer in it, and she expressed some interest in rezoning. Operating partially as an institutional use, similar to a church, but also meeting space, storage space for disaster relief supplies, and space for other nonprofits to meet their goals, but also operates an apothecary where they sell natural health and wellness items. That'd be about 30% of the building, so that's what necessitates the rezoning to C1 from R2 on that south side of Sunnyside. And it's noted, the property to the north, which is right on the border of the city, the last property on the city limits there on Memorial Park, has a landscape business that's been zoned R1, single-family residential. So it was a note through the planning commission and staff to include them as well. We have reached out to them and they confer with that to rezone to C1, bringing that into conformance with the zoning code. Again, planning commission recommended 4 to 0 to recommend approval of the request to City Council.
Okay. Counselors, do you have any questions or concerns, thoughts?
Well, no, just from the planning commission meeting, there was one resident or nearby neighbor that came to the meeting, just had concerns if it was rezoned, what some future use could be in the church. We don't know, just like any other thing, we don't know other than what the applicant's planning to do, what that would be, but he just, I just wanted to note that, that someone came and did question down the road, what could it be? And it would be allowed anything under the C1 zoning district.
Okay. When you, when you answered that question, when planning only asked that question, did he have any further concerns or no?
I'd have to talk with the planner. He just wanted to raise that, that just the, what types of future businesses could occupy that, and it's just addressed. Generally, C1's limited commercial office, small retail sales, it's not larger uses like a large restaurant or, it's based on the lot size and different things, so.
Thank you. Hey, Kay?
So is the Memorial Park Road landscaping business not in compliance right now, or is that C1 now?
No, it's R1 now, it'd be a legal non-conforming property. It's been that way, CCAT was there previously.
Right.
There's the gas station before that.
Yeah, so it's been a longtime commercial property, it's this one right here, but just noted with the church rezoning, we generally look at what our surrounding use is and noted that that was an existing legal non-conforming, and this would make it a legal conforming use.
Okay, that's my, of course, thank you.
Anything else, counsel? Okay, number three is public hearing, consideration of an ordinance amending various sections of Chapter 154 Residential Code of the City of Burlington, Iowa, or City of Burlington Municipal Code. This will be the first reading. Do you want to do these all separately? You want to go through them all? They're all separate, aren't they?
Yeah, probably all, I was going to ask Ross, I'll sup our code inspector too, as well. He enforces the codes and prepared all these updates. Essentially, this is all triggered by an update to the 2024 codes, the state's adopting so that we can stay in compliance with the state from their code standpoint. But do have a significant changes outline there at the start that goes through each section, but Ross is very well-versed in this and can answer anything in particular on it as well.
Okay.
Yep, if you have any questions, let me know, so.
I, I didn't have any questions when I went through it. Counsel, did you have any thoughts or concerns?
No, just out of curiosity, when do they go to, on the 150-square-foot buildings? Accessory buildings that you don't have to have permits?
So the, the IBC, IRC, and Existing Building Code currently require 200 square feet. We, as a city, require 150 square feet, and the change to that is elaborating on the type of building that will be excluded. Right now, it's written in code, it's just accessory structures. So we're still having issues with people buying accessory structures, prefab sheds that are under that 150 square feet and setting them wherever on the property. So we added in some language to make sure that those buildings also meet zoning setbacks. So you'd be exempt if you buy, you know, you go to Menards and buy an 80-square-foot garden shed, put it on the property, as long as it meets the setbacks, too, you're exempt from a permit. So we just want to make people, make sure that people that are buying those are meeting zoning setbacks as well, because if they don't need a building permit, they don't always stop into my office to get one.
And we haven't required permits for 150 or less, as long as I've been with, for 20-plus years, so it's kind of been...
That's been pretty standard in the code, probably as far back that I've looked, as 2012, so.
It's been a while since I built one, so.
Yeah.
So basically, we're bringing our things in compliance or in concert with what the state is requiring?
Yes, so January 1st, the state will adopt the 2024 ICC code, so we want to meet compliance with the state. So you can see in there, too, that some of the language added outlines that we do have adopted state codes, but when we refer to Burlington Building Code, that also takes into account the local amendments that we have as well. So kind of clears that up in talking to contractors, because contractors work in multiple different cities, so when I'm talking to them and I refer to Burlington's Building Code, they note a reference that we do have local amendments to the code as well.
Thank you.
Any other questions on 154, Kay?
On the, on the ground fault under the electrical, it says now all appliances in a property that's a rental property that doesn't currently have ground fault on...
Are you down on 157, Tim?
I'm sorry.
Which one are you on?
I've jumped ahead.
Oh, that's all right, that's all right.
That's fine.
I just soon discuss them all, if that's okay with counsel. 154, 155, 156, 157, yeah, there, and 158, 159, so. So you're going to 157, I mean, the one, next one we have a question on. Okay, now...
So with the electrical code, the state did adopt the 2023 NEC, which had some more stringent requirements for ground fault. The state amended many of those out. It was anything 60 amp and up to 240 volt would now require GFCI protection. That's pretty tough to find for any electric stove or your refrigerator or dryers. So the state did amend those out. Those won't be put into effect for rental properties because this isn't going into the housing code. So in order to require those GFCI requirements in existing rental properties, we'd have to make an amendment to the housing code. This would be for new construction.
Good.
Okay. Mr. Burlington, let me just clarify, I'm complying here, so we're doing a public hearing consideration of changes to, I'm going to rephrase this so we can cover all these different ones, okay? Changes to Chapter 154, 155. 154 Residential Code.
Yeah, you might read the script or...
155 International Building Code. 156 International Existing Building Code. Chapter 157 Electrical Code. 158 Plumbing Code. 159 Mechanical Code. And then I'll stop and we'll talk about fire separately. Okay, I just want to make sure we're good. Okay, so we, 157, anybody else have any questions on 158, which would be the plumbing code? I didn't have anything highlighted.
Or any significant changes, Ross, that you might know?
Probably the most significant change that we're looking at now is this would affect the downtown area. So previously, you could have, be exempt from a sprinkler system if you had residential units, up to four units, maintaining that you had a one-hour fire separation. We have raised that fire separation to two-hour, which has been required in code for years now, so now we're going to align with International Building Code and what the state of Iowa has. So you still can be exempt from a sprinkler system up to four units. Code actually would require anything over two units, so though, there may be some added cost in providing that, what's normally an extra-layer sheet rock, that provides adequate fire separation, fire protection for the tenants there and for first responders that would have to go into a building if it were on fire.
Okay, so then, let's see, 159, any questions on it? And then, public hearing, consideration of an ordinance amending various sections of Chapter 162 Fire Prevention Code of the Burlington Municipal Code.
And I'd just note, all the building codes, if approved by council, will not take effect till January 1.
Right, okay. Fire, Fire Marshal?
Good evening. Just following suit with building in the state. Again, September of this year, the state adopted the IFC 2024, they gave a six-months grace period. So we're, again, like Eric said, we're following suit, and we're going to adopt this January 1 of 2026. So the first, it's kind of just what Ross said, we have, Chapter 162 is a fire code section for the City of Burlington, so there were some minor changes throughout there, such as change in the years and a little bit of code sections that changed. Also, what's in there are the appendixes, which the appendixes, if you do not adopt them, when you adopt the International Fire Code, you also have to adopt the appendixes of those. We didn't adopt all the appendixes because some of those do not relate to our city, such as high-rise buildings and so on and so forth. Within there, there's some amendments and additions that we put in specifically, it's Exhibit A, which is talking about fire alarm systems. That's Chapter 907 of the International Fire Code. So we've deleted some, some paragraphs out of there and we've added some. What we have found in these larger buildings, basically anything up to 22,500 square feet in a commercial structure, your building can be zoned. And what that means is that within that zone, I wanted to say the numbers nearing about 20 initiating devices per zone. So that's a smoke detector, that's a heat detector, duct detector, manual pole station. So when, one of those trips the system, it'll come in as a zoned system, and it'll tell you Zone 1, okay? So some of our structures that we have around this area, they can zone those buildings out, so say if you have a, you know, 300,000-square-foot building, they're, historically, they've been zoned. So as a fireman go into one of these calls, it says, go to Zone 1. Yes, they're supposed to have a map that tells you where Zone 1 is, but when you get into that zone, now you have to walk around and figure out which one of those appliances is going off, okay?
Sure.
And that's, that takes up valuable time and resources. What I'm proposing here with Exhibit A is that that'll be what we call in our world a true point-to-point system. So if you have eight or more initiating devices connected to a fire alarm system, when we, our dispatch, our dispatch, DESCOM, I think is what is referred in there, DESCOM will let us know what device is going off, okay? So take, for instance, that, again, that 300,000-square-foot commercial building, it'll tell us, it is floor 3, it's device such-and-such, it's an alphanumeric character, and it's, let's say, located in room 2001. So it's literally taking us straight to the affected area. So when we're en route to these scenes, we're already in our minds, pre-planning this and planning our, our attack on this building, or our tactics to this building. We're not just aimlessly walking through this building, trying to find a device that is going off.
How do, how does it, how do you get that, the information, not of where it's at, but how do you know where it's at within that 300,000-square-foot building? Is it, is it identified by...
So there, so there's a, there's a map generally next to that fire alarm system. So when we go out and do pre-plans, we have pre-planned software that's on all of our rigs, we can, it's called Flow MSP, we can pull up that location, and there's pictures that, when we go out and do these pre-plans, we take pictures of all this stuff. So we pull that up, we can click on this picture, and we'll have a picture of, of that facility on there. And I'll back up. So Burlington High School has three beautiful maps next to their fire alarm panel, right? And on that map, if you zoom in, you'll notice that every office space, every classroom is noted on there, okay? And they all have numbers associated with them. So room 3,000, we know exactly that that is, just throwing this out there, but it's, it's the, say, northwest corner of the building. So instead of us reporting to the fire alarm panel that's on the south side of the building, going there, looking at that fire alarm panel, and then deciding how we're going to deploy our tactics, when we're driving across town, we already know that we have to send an engine to that north side of that building.
Cool.
Yeah.
So computer technology is wonderful.
It is, and I've spoke to several fire alarm contractors, it's, it's a lot of programming, right? So it's download, I make it sound easy, but it sounds easy, but download something to a USB, plug it in over here, it uploads, and then it's magic, but I'm sure it's a little bit more than that.
I, I have a question about 907.7.4, which is the device zone map, and at the end, it says the location of all initiating devices when required by the fire code official. Shouldn't that just be...
So 907.7.4?
Yeah, it's easily readable, fire alarm device and/or zone map of the building shall be permanently mounted in or near the fire alarm control panel and documentation cabinet showing the location of all initiating devices when required by the fire code. showing the location of all initiating devices when required by the fire code official.
It's always required.
Okay.
That's what I wanted to know, so.
So when we go, when we, whenever I enter in a building, I, it's one of the things that I inspect are fire alarms. So most, most businesses have them. Some are more rudimentary than others. It's, somebody just went on their computer and typed something out. Some are a little bit more elaborate. So I'm just trying to do my best to up the game and make them more elaborate. So if you ever go into Burlington High School, I use that as an example because that's a wonderful, very informative map for our first responders, right? E- even law enforcement, if something happened, their law enforcement officer out there, he understands and can easily read that map without any training at all.
So I guess my only concern, Fire Marshal, I think, I think you already know the answer to it. But so what's this represent to a pre-existing business? It does not represent a huge investment.
To a pre-existing building, it's not retroactive. Unless you're doing, I think I have it written in one of those sections, an alteration, modification. You have to look, it's, it's in there.
It's in there somewhere.
And if, if you're doing those alterations or modifications and the system is eight or more initiating devices, then yes, then basically it's retroactive. But if you're underneath that eight, you think of some of these smaller businesses downtown that may just have a type-one kitchen hood system, that's gonna be one initiating device, that's not gonna require anything. It, it's really geared towards these, these larger facilities. And the time will come where they have to update their system because of the technology changes.
Okay. And that's my question.
Again, it's a programming, it's all, it's all a programming thing.
Anyone else have any other questions? Thank you, very informative. Number ten is a motion for preliminary adoption of the second reading of an ordinance rezoning property locally known as nine oh-two Oak Street from R three, two-family residential to C one, limited commercial zoning district.
No changes from the previous reading, just rezoning the existing kind of longtime commercial property at the corner there of Oak. From residential to C one, limited commercial would allow mixed-use commercial and residential in the upper story.
I already thought it was. Any counsel, any questions, counsel? Is there a move to maybe waive this?
Yes, yes, absolutely.
Everybody?
Okay.
Let's plant on that, Mr. Bird. Number eleven is resolution approving a preliminary plat of Memorial Meadows subdivision. City Planning Commission voted three oh with two abstaining to recommend approval.
This property is located just north of Burlington. I'll show a map here quick as well. Just north of our rezoning properties right here. Well within the two-mile review area for our plats, probably one of the closer ones that we've had in recent years. So there was some comments in review by staff. As mentioned, the Planning Commission voted three to zero with two abstaining to recommend approval of the preliminary plat. They did place some conditions on that approval, that the street and right-of-way meet city standards for the right-of-way of the cul-de-sac and the paved roadway width. As shown on the plat that was submitted, I'm trying to zoom in here. It's a sixty-six-foot right-of-way entering into the cul-de-sac, which is the standard county width, the city width is sixty, but it's only planned as a twenty-two-foot road. Our standard is twenty-six, twenty-seven feet. And then the cul-de-sac being eighty-foot paved turnaround with a hundred-foot right-of-way. Those standards were recommended based on a review by city departments, including Public Works, Community Development, and Fire Departments with emergency response and a close proximity to Burlington city limits being one of the factors for recommendation. I anticipated that at some point, as we looked, this isn't our growth boundary, that this could be annexed into the city, especially with how close it is to existing properties. And we do see a lot of new development in the county and the two-mile area, but larger subdivisions like this within quarter-mile of the city limits don't occur too often. So that's, that's why we have the review and that's why the recommendations were made.
Okay, thoughts, concerns? We're gonna be all right with the twenty-two foot?
No, the recommendation is they meet city standards.
Okay, what do they say to that?
Planning Commission recommended three to zero with two abstaining to do that.
Oh, due to that?
To do the, this is recommending meeting city standards. The resolution in front of you is.
Okay, gotcha, that's where I was lost.
Yep.
Okay.
They would just make a note on the plat and then when the final plat came forward, that would be amended with those standards if counsel approves that.
Okay.
Maybe just to clarify, the twenty-two feet is the street width.
Yeah.
The sixty-six feet is the right-of-way width.
Yeah, yeah.
So the resolution in front of you would require a standard paved roadway meeting city standards for width, including the eighty-foot paved cul-de-sac, hundred-foot right-of-way cul-de-sac. They show a sixty-foot wide cul-de-sac there, that does not meet our city standards. So the recommendation on the, from the Planning Commission in this resolution is to meet city standards for the roadway and right-of-way, including paved.
Old sundown.
Sundown, please.
Yeah.
Eric, why did a couple people abstain?
One was the developer and one was, worked for the company that prepared the plat.
Okay.
Okay.
That's an interest.
May I ask about the cul-de-sac? We've had other discussions about cul-de-sacs before. Is, is that large enough to meet the requirements that of the fire trucks and the other emergency?
As shown on the plat, it's not, but the recommended conditions, so the conditions of the resolution do meet city standards.
Yeah, I missed that part, too.
Yep. Our city standard is an eighty-foot paved with hundred-foot right-of-way. And that's what's recommended, that's what's noted in the resolution.
Okay, I didn't get that from what I read. So maybe can I be clarified?
Okay, any other questions?
So what do you, what do you see as clarification? So if Eric reads the resolution, it's approving sixty-foot right-of-way, twenty-seven-foot street, cul-de-sac of eighty-foot paved turnaround with a hundred-foot right-of-way.
See, I think.
That's not what's in the plat.
That's, I think that's.
But that's what's in the, right?
That's what, that's what the confusion thing is. Because even though I read that, then you look up there and you say, wait a minute, that's against, because it's drawn out that way.
Maybe Eric, for the meeting, you could just, even just pencil that in on the plat, just to show the recommendation over.
Because I mean, we've had, you know, most of us have been sitting here for a while listening to you on this stuff and I missed it.
Yeah.
And so, you know, we want our public to know.
A little more complicated as well, because this goes to our city planning commission, goes to the county zoning commission, then goes to city council and to the board of supervisors. But each one has their part in it, so I'll, I'll make a note of that.
Thank you.
And we've been communicating with the county on their process as well and working with the county land use administrator of submitting this plat, but noting that in the resolution, the changes and.
Man, more homes, I'm, I'm all about it, that's great. Any other que, questions, concerns? All right, Nick's chomping at the bit. Resolution authorizing the submission of a Revitalize Iowa Sound Economy RISE Grant application for the Division Street and West Burlington Avenue Roundabout Project.
So this is the second time I come to you talking about a grant submittal for this proposed project. The RISE Grant is more focused on the jobs that are created with Western Smokehouse. And so the application reads as such, it's a eighty-twenty match. And in, when partnered with the T-SIP grant, should we receive it? It would mean that the city of Burlington essentially pays no dollars out of its own pocket to correct this intersection. So we're estimating the project about one point five million with right-of-way acquisition, the cost of design and the construction. So I think it, if we could get both of these at the same time, it would be ideal for us to be able to redo this intersection.
It's busy, for sure. Thoughts or concerns, guys, applying for the grant? Thank you, Nick, good luck, go get them. Moving on, the proposed consent agenda for November seventeenth, two thousand twenty-five is a resolution approving nuisance abatements for various properties. Thoughts or concerns? I will tell counsel, I, I sent Eric some thoughts on some that seem to be recurring and he's working on those, he'll get us, he'll get us an update.
This week.
Soon, this week, thanks.
Mayor, just on that, too, Eric and I did talk about, we may take some time at, at a future work session, maybe the next one, and explain maybe in a little more detail.
Right.
Some of the nature of your concerns with some of these that we tend to see time and time again on our list. And it may simply be that they're in foreclosure, they're in probate, there's just some things that just take time. But Eric will put together a pretty good review of that, just that whole process for a future meeting.
Yeah, I mean, that report's nineteen, nineteen-nine, right? Nineteen thousand nine hundred and forty bucks.
Yep.
So, any other thoughts or concerns, counsel? Number two is resolution approving the annual finance report. Mrs. Stuker, how are you?
Good.
Good.
So this is the annual report that's due to the state on December first. The, the, the one-page recap of the financial report will be published in the Hawkeye next Tuesday after you approve it on Monday. So this is just a recap of everything that happened for fiscal year twenty-five.
Okay.
Does anybody have any questions?
Any thoughts or concerns, counsel? Number three is resolution annual urban, or resolution approving annual urban renewal report.
So this is another state report that's due December first. It's just a recap of what's happened in our urban renewal funds, which we call our TIF funds. So it just recaps the revenue, the TIF revenue we received and what we spent it on. Again, we have a couple rebates and then the other expenditures are debt payments for bonds that we've TIF'd projects for, so just to recap.
Any thoughts or concerns on that one, counsel? Number four is resolution approving the street financial report.
So this is a report just recapping for fiscal year twenty-five what's happened in what we call our road use tax funds, where we do capital projects and also where we receive our road use funds we get from the state. So just, again, a recap.
Okay, any thoughts or concerns, counsel? Number five, resolution authorizing internal loan from the general fund to tax increment revenue fund.
So December first is a deadline that I need to certify TIF debt with the county. And so these, the next four resolutions are all about approving the amounts that I will certify to the county on December first. So this first one is an internal loan. We've been doing this for several years where we do fifty thousand of TIF revenue and we reimburse the general fund for expenses that we have throughout the year, whether they're attorney expenses, Chad I or Eric's, you know, time. It doesn't cover all of it, but this is something that was budgeted for FY twenty-six. So this is just approving it as an internal loan.
Okay.
So we certify the debt.
Thoughts or concerns, counsel? Number six is resolution obligating funds from the Burlington Crossing TIF rebate sub-fund of the city's urban renewal tax revenue fund for appropriation to the payment of annual appropriation tax increment rebate payments due to be paid in the succeeding fiscal year.
Yes, so our TIF rebates, which, you know, again, those were set up in a development agreement in the past. This one's Burlington Crossings. I think we're in our sixth or seventh year of this one. This is our estimate of what the, what they're gonna pay in taxes and what we're gonna give back to them. We have to annually appropriate it each year based on an estimate that I get from the county. So for Burlington Crossings, we're estimating up to an amount of six hundred thousand.
Okay. Counsel, stop if you have any concerns. Number seven is a rev, a resolution obligating funds from the Merge LLC TIF rebate sub-fund of the city's urban renewal tax revenue fund for appropriation to the payment of annual appropriation tax increment rebate payments due to be paid in the succeeding fiscal year.
So this is Merge LLC, this is the first year they're getting the TIF rebate and we're estimating a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars is what we'll give them back.
And number eight, resolution to obligating funds from the Park West LLC TIF rebate sub-fund of the city's urban renewal tax revenue fund for appropriation to the payment of annual appropriation tax increment rebate payments due to be paid in the succeeding fiscal year.
This one's estimated to be thirty-five thousand is what I'll pay to Park West LLC.
Okay. Thank you. Number nine is a resolution awarding contract to Brunner, Cooper, and Zook, Inc. for twenty twenty-six construction, observation, and inspection support. Mr. McGregor?
This resolution would award contract B C Z for assistance with construction inspection with two larger projects, both Washington Street and then Summer Street. We, we will do a lot of the inspection in-house, but should we need to have some assistance with vacations and holidays and such, it's, we want to have a B C Z on standby to be able to help us. And so in front of you is a contract to hire them as a not-to-exceed basis. I don't think that we will come anywhere close to the dollar figure listed at a hundred and sixty-four thousand, but I just wanna be able to have it there if I need it, to be able to do the inspection. And so for reference sake, a level, almost eleven-million-dollar project with Summer and almost three-million-dollar project with Washington Street, we general, generally plan around seven percent for construction inspection for each of the projects. So, you know, we're well into almost the two-million range for that type of work. So a hundred and sixty-four thousand seems like a lot, but there's a lot that goes into these projects, especially when they have DOT funds associated with them.
Okay.
Does this include like core sampling for concrete in the areas?
Yeah, so in the description, it does talk about some core sampling. We are trying to get away from punching cores through the concrete. We actually have a MET scanner, so you deposit a metal plate underneath the concrete and you're able to tell the thickness based on that. So hopefully, we can try and get away from.
New tech.
It drives, it drives me crazy, we have this brand-new road paved. And I, I understand it's, you know, six, you know, inches in diameter, but you're punching a hole right through a brand-new road, so.
And it drives me nuts as well.
New technology, good.
Any thoughts or concerns, counsel? Okay. Number ten is resolution approving the purchase of property located immediately west of the Public Works Complex, three, three, five, five Agency Street.
So this resolution would authorize the acquisition of the highlighted parcel in red. So in the flood mitigation plan, we had, we have flood wall, both temporary and permanent, that was planned. And for phase seven, there was a planned storage facility. I think I put that image in my memo. And so the problem with the facility is that we don't have anywhere to really truly build it. And so we, we had conversation early on with the lot immediately to the east of the facility, between Harley-Davidson and J D Byer Rider. There was some fall-through on, on those, on that deal. So we hired an appraiser to appraise the property owned there. And we had a fairly good appraisal come back, it's landlocked. And so that's highlighted in the memo. We negotiated a price to a hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars to purchase and acquire this property. If you would hit the next slide, I can kind of explain the, the current operations of our flood wall equipment. So currently, all of our flood wall trailers, which include or have the aluminum panels all stacked on top of it, Hasko barriers, we have an enclosed trailer where we have all the, all the bolts, nuts and bolts of the, literally the nuts and bolts, all stacked inside of the armory building. And with this new or next flood wall stage, we will be getting more. And with this new or next flood wall stage, we will be getting more panels. And we're cramped in there right now, so following the plan that had, you know, been laid out for this, we need to think about building the facility. And so, if you'd hit the next slide for me. This is just a concept use of the lot. You can see off to the west of the darkened area is approximately a twelve-thousand-square-foot cold storage facility that would essentially only have electrical, along with some garage doors. We would, in the acquisition, we would retain ownership of the lease. Unfortunately, the way it was set up, it was a one-time cash offer to the property owner, so it's not something we can cash flow. We would only have to provide them access, and being their neighbor, they're not in there very often. The anticipated use would be also clear all the trees out along those tree lines there, and then it would open up accessible building to the north of that asphalted area. So, I think it would be about two and a half acres to the north. So, more land than we need, but it's definitely better pricing than we have also received from other areas. So, let me see if I can explain anymore. Is there any questions before I continue?
So, Nick, this would, all the equipment that's currently in the armory would move to this location-
Correct.
And then you would have the additional equipment and material in this building as well.
Yes, and-
Should all be located under one roof?
And the other piece of it is, we currently have all of our inventory of trash cans housed inside the armory building, which doesn't make it very convenient to dispatch new or different-sized trash cans. And so, I would anticipate moving all the trash cans into this facility as well. So, plus, it unloads or opens up a lot of opportunity. I know the armory site is anticipated to eventually go away. I know that the guys at the, your forestry division will potentially be moving, but there's definitely a need for some extra cold storage space. We leave a lot of equipment outside, and I would like to get some stuff undercover, out of the elements of the sun and whatnot. UV is pretty damaging to, to, you know, rubber seals and gaskets and such, so.
This is off the beaten subject, do we own the armory, or does the airport own it?
Airport does.
That's what I thought, okay.
I don't know what year it happened, but we actually, we were in the ownership of the armory, and then we, I would say gifted it, we gave it to them.
Okay, good enough.
I don't know what year that happened. Yeah.
I think it was like two thousand eight or two thousand nine.
Yeah, I think you were on council at the time when that happened.
Any other questions about this purchase of property?
Is there enough room to put cake storage for the sewage treatment plant out there?
You know, if it was reasonable to truck it across town, I think that there is definitely room to add to the north.
Maybe if that stays in Ag there, you could land apply it.
True. I mean, there will be a couple of acres that we could receive a little bit of cash flow on. I think currently that the paper company lets people bail on it, so I, there's not a lot of cash rent-
No.
-in bailin' hay, but a little bit, a little, something's better than nothing, I guess, but.
Okay. Are we done on this one, Gabe? All right, moving on, thank you. Number eleven, resolution approving the purchase of a twenty-twenty-five EZ liner windrunner palletized paint striper for Public Works Department.
This resolution would authorize the purchase of the scene equipment that you see there. I'm not going to lie, PowerPoint helped me out and did me a solid on that one. It must have some AI work in there. All I did was import the picture, and it threw a road right behind it, so. What you see there is a palletized, or what we insert in the back of a one-ton pickup truck. It's a paint striping machine. Our current unit is approximately twenty-five, thirty years old, and this would bring us back into the ability to operate significantly more efficient than we currently do. This unit that is different from the other one, the biggest one is the paint gun on the right-hand side of it. So, currently, when we have any sort of edge of roadway or bike lane or any sort of striping on there, we actually have to drive the wrong direction down the roadway, so we have the paint gun off to the left, able to paint. So, with this unit, we can actually drive the correct way down the roadway.
Can you do one pass if needed?
You can't paint, you can't paint both sides at once. And unfortunately, because they're different colors, you can't swap the color. Because there's only one pump that runs through, and so if you had two pumps, I guess, in theory, you could. But that would be an awful, awfully difficult thing for the driver to keep both lines at the appropriate distance.
Forget I asked.
It's all right, no, it's worth a question, it's been, it's, you know, something of note. No, I get it.
So, this is the unit we've been talking about possibly sharing or-
This is a little bit different unit. So, West Burlington, Greg Mansager and their Public Works Director and I have been talking about a shared piece of equipment. This is different than some of our earlier conversation this summer. The one that we had talked about this summer was more, it was a much larger piece of equipment. It was in the two-hundred-and-twenty range, it had its own chassis, which unfortunately means a motor of its own to maintain. It did get people up and out of kind of, you know, the kill box, I guess I would say, that's not a very good term to use, but- you know, in this process, we always have to have a bumper truck, or a buffer truck, rather, between the paint unit and then, you know, traffic that's coming behind it. So, you know, when they're sitting, they're kind of sitting out behind the truck. On the other unit that we are looking at, it was, it would get people up and out. But the agreement or the conditions that we were discussing with West Burlington, it didn't seem like the money made a lot of sense, and I didn't know where we were going as a kind of a shared combined piece of equipment. So, this is the unit we had intended to purchase when we put it in the C I P originally, and so I actually met with them last week, but we need to get it ordered, because even at this rate, it'll be April by the time we get it.
Okay.
So, I did put a little memo or note in the memo about our discussion with West Burlington. When we purchase this, should we purchase this, we will work out any sort of details with them kind of on the back end.
All right, questions? Thank you, Nick. Then, we'll be setting the date for a public hearing December first, twenty-twenty-five, and that will be a consideration of sale of property locally known as fourteen-thirty-five Thugel Street, the city of Burlington, Iowa, with conditions. Counsel, is there any one of these items on the consent you would like moved to the regular agenda? Okay. Anything else for future discussion? Mr. Bird, you got anything pending?
No.
Okay. We've each reached the end of our work session, we'll go around and get department heads and council. Eric Tisland, Development Department, got anything else for us tonight?
Just a couple of things again. Golf Course will be hosting the Turkey Trot Thanksgiving morning at nine AM. You can sign up through Facebook or website there. They're also hosting that Saturday after Thanksgiving on the twenty-ninth, Breakfast with Santa at the golf course for kids kindergarten through fourth grade. It's ninety-one, twenty dollars. Encourage people to check that out as well on the Golf Course or Parks Facebook pages. And then, just a reminder, on six oh one, Washington, Wednesday would be when we'd be able to move forward with that. We've had questions on bricks, that would be part of the project and up to the contractor. They're not ours for the city, but we've had some people wondering if they could come and buy some or take some, and that was part of the bid with contractor potential fill, but we'd pass on any names to our demo contractor, and he could deal with that as he sees fit. So, we'll work with him to see when he'd be able to start. I don't know that we have a firm date yet, but Wednesday would be the earliest.
Thank you, Eric. Chief Schaefer, anything from PD tonight? Fire Marshal Byrne, anything from Fire Department? Okay. Tim, anything from, no? waved me off, shook me off early. Brittany, library?
I'm trying to think of the library signs off, but I know that there is one.
I think it's just a period.
We have a couple, we'll come up with them.
It's got to be a good one. Just a quick note that the library will be closed to the public tomorrow for Veterans Day, but you will see a lot of cars in the parking lot because it's our annual November staff training. We'll be looking at the politics of aging and a close look at our city and county demographic data, as well as a trip to Heart Song Daycare Services for a tour and a conversation with Denise Hanks. And then, tomorrow afternoon, we will be a certified dementia-friendly library after our training with Dementia Friendly Iowa. So, closed to the public, although you'll see a lot of cars. We'll be back open and at it nine AM on Wednesday morning.
Sounds good, thank you. Mrs. Stuker, anything else from Finance? No? Nick, anything else? Public Works or Deputy City Manager?
The only thing of note that you guys should be aware of is some changes that'll happen over the next couple of weeks with traffic lights on Roosevelt. We've had quite a few accidents at West Avenue. They're not as severe as the one on Mason, but their frequency is significantly high. It appears as though maybe the permissive left-hand yellow flashing arrow is asking people to make judgment calls that they're maybe not able to make with some of the speed of folks coming into town. So, with that, we will be trying, we have the availability, we have a traffic engineer that can go into the system and alter that, make them protected left-hand turns only, meaning they will only get their green arrow, and then, once it's off, they have to wait for the next cycle. So, given the rate of accidents that have been there over the last, you know, couple, I think we've had nine accidents at West Avenue this year already, so we're looking at, we're exploring several different things that are going on there to help push some of the speed further south, because people are still rolling into town pretty heavy. The chief and I had talked about, you know, kind of the speed, and I know that they've picked up some enforcement in that area, but can't be there twenty-four-seven, so. Anyway, just letting you know that people may be complaining about traffic lights because that's something that people see and observe and deal with, so.
Thank you for the heads up, sir.
No problem.
Mr. Bird?
Just a couple of things, thanks. I handed out a memo here about the second public input meeting for Roosevelt Highway Sixty-One project study, and there will be a public input meeting on Wednesday, November twelfth, five-thirty to seven PM, up at the partnership. It'll be similar to the first one that we had, but this time, they will actually take some of the information from the first one and the survey that was conducted a while ago, and start to put some of those ideas on paper, so folks can actually see some of the prevailing comments on paper and comment further. So, there may be three or four designs based on that information on Wednesday for folks to take a look at. So, we encourage the public to come and check that out and continue to provide input on concepts and designs for Highway Sixty-One Roosevelt through Burlington. City Hall will also be closed tomorrow in honor of Veterans Day. Thank you to those that served. And council talk Wednesday? Okay? And-
It's Mayor Proten and Tim Scott.
All right. And staff will be traveling to Atumwa to start our budget planning season as we attend a budget workshop held by the Iowa League of Cities, so joy of joy. That's all I have.
Atumwa.
Yeah.
Lot of hot times there. Mr. Bailey, anything? Mr. Scott, anything?
Yeah. If you think you're having a bad day or a bad year or a bad life, I want to share with you a story of a young man that buried his baby sister today, the day before the third anniversary of passing of his wife. And three years before that, his mother passed away on December twenty-fourth, the day after her birthday of December twenty-third and the day before his birthday of December twenty-fifth. The kid has had, I don't know if you call it horrible luck, or he's had events happen to him that would break me. And in being, I call him a young man, he's in his late forties, has the weight of the world on his shoulders and carries it pretty proudly. And I'm proud of that, of that young man. And she's probably not watching tonight, but hopefully he'll get the message and let him know how much I appreciate him and how he took care of my daughter, so.
Outstanding, yeah. Okay? Okay, Linda?
Just a couple of things. I'm excited to announce I joined Friends of the Library today. It's been on my to-do list, and I've always been so busy with council activities and now coming off council, my goal is to do more reading, so I'm excited, I got that taken care of today. And also coming up this weekend at the Capitol as a Queen impersonator, I think that's Friday night?
Yes.
Yes, anyway, check it out, the seats are almost all sold out, so it's going to be a good time.
You mean like the England's Queen impersonator or a Queen tribute band?
Queen tribute band.
Okay, thank you. I was going to say, I wouldn't show up for one. Just saying.
I know what I meant.
Let's just keep it real here. I would also echo, I always call it, "Thank you Veterans Day." Being related to several veterans and a son that's currently serving, very important to me, and by golly, it should be a week, to be honest with you. We owe you folks a lot. Congratulations to Annie Wilson and to Robert Kreitzer on their successful run for council. And Mr. Bailey, I'll have some thoughts on your tenure when it comes appropriate, so we appreciate your service to the city. And that's all I have. Let's get out of here.